All right, good evening. It is 5:01 on Monday, June 22. I would like to call to order the Education Operations Committee meeting of the Wassa Board of Education. All Wassa School District Board of Education meetings will be conducted as a virtual meeting due to an active emergency situation, COVID-19 pandemic, meaning that multiple board members may be participating in the meeting from remote locations through the use of communications technology and that public access to the meeting may be arranged through the use of technology. Members of the media and public may attend in person by calling 1-415-655-0001, then dial the meeting room access code 1336446509, or through the virtual WebEx meeting link located on the district website. All public participants' phones, microphones, and chat dialogue boxes will be muted or disabled during the meeting. Members of the public who do not wish to appear in person may email CPAC@wassaschools.org with "public comment" in the subject line. Those messages received prior to the start of the meeting will be provided to the Board President. Members of the public who do not wish to appear in person may view the meeting live via the Wassa Area Access Media on the Government and Education Cable Channel 981. Wassa Area Access Media also livestreams the meeting on https://waam.viebit.com. The meeting will also be available on the Wassa Area Access Media YouTube channel a few days after filming. All meeting access information shall also appear in a prominent location on the Wassa School District website. For those individuals with disabilities, including individuals with visual or hearing impairments, as well as individuals who may have limited access to technology, please contact the Deputy Clerk Cassie Peck at 715-261-0505, or CPAC@wassaschools.org. Thank you. Okay, second on the agenda is to approve the minutes, and I'm seeking a motion to approve the minutes of May 18, 2020. As a reminder, board members, Cassie will be looking for a 1 and a 2 held up in the screen, and also for clarity's sake, for those that are watching, we're going to announce the vote. So I think we have eight board members present. If it's unanimous, you know, we'll announce that, then just for clarity for those watching. So seeking a motion to approve the minutes of May 18, 2020. See, one from Beth.
Uh, okay, Beth?
So yeah, first.
And Jim Boucher, second.
Okay, so we have a first from Beth Martin and a second from Jim Boucher. All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Um, was that a, was there? For clarity, was there somebody opposed to meeting minutes?
Aye.
Jane, okay. Abstentions? Okay, motion carries. Eight.
For clarity, was there somebody opposed to meeting minutes?
Oh, is that delayed?
Was it opposed?
Okay, no, it's a delay on our end for some reason.
Abstentions?
I don't know what's going on.
My computer's going haywire.
Okay, okay.
That's new.
Um, just for clarity for everybody, we're having a delay over here. So Jane, I heard yours after. So that would be a 9-0 vote in favor of approving the motion, approving the minutes of May 18, 2020.
Do you think I'm gonna have to shut down, restart? We're gonna have that delay.
Um, it is a little bit of a delay. Does it shut the whole meeting down?
I don't know. I think so.
What if, what if Tricia spoke only? Then if yours was turned down, then it wouldn't be an issue, right?
But when other people are talking, I think there'll still be a delay.
Oh, to the audience?
Well, let's give it a try and see.
Um, yeah, go ahead.
So, board members, we were, we were trying to figure out a tech issue here. Cassie is, obviously runs the meeting and is having a significant delay on her computer. So if we were to shut it down, it would shut the whole meeting down. So we're going to try not to have to restart.
I'm going to transfer hosting to you.
Okay.
I can restart my computer, bring everything up. If you can just give me a couple minutes, and I apologize.
Okay.
Can you let them know that's what we're gonna do?
Yes, so, board members, at this point, Cassie is transferring hosting to my computer or to my iPad temporarily so that she can restart, and hopefully it will eliminate whatever bug is going.
Take a minute to introduce a couple of people. Keith Brown has sounded off. Diana White is our new Director of Communications. You might see Diana on the screen. We're happy to have Diana with us. She spent quite a bit of this morning with residents. Although we said to her, given her departure, she's been to Bill, because Diana is trying to go. Also, Peter Leatherman, you've heard from Peter before. Peter Leatherman is from Morris Leatherman. So if you've heard, I believe in person from Peter, he was in our board at the contemporary. He's gonna share results of a little recent event with us. Also, Steve Shor is from Vexis. You have seen and heard from Steve before. He's on the screen. Let's see, who else? I think those are the new faces and names out there, but isn't anybody?
Thank you.
There we go.
Okay, so I'm gonna resume the meeting.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay. Sorry about that delay, everybody. John did come down and assist Cassie. She had to do a forced shutdown for anybody that's joining the meeting or watching it after that lengthy delay. We had a bit of a tech issue in our virtual meeting, and we are ready to move forward with Agenda Item Number Three on the agenda tonight. That is Public and Student Comment. And there were several that were submitted. One was submitted by the same individual. We had one that was submitted by Stephanie Carlson on June 9, and it was urging to send the students back to school full-time in the fall, based on the rest of the language. Presumably, that means physically in-person and not virtual. And then this individual, Stephanie, also submitted comment today. Just reiterating that, now that DP guidelines have come out, just requesting that schools open with five-day in-person instruction. Our other public comment was submitted by Julie Wolf. This was submitted yesterday afternoon, and also urging to open schools, physically reopen them, indicating concerns about virtual education. So we will enter these into public comment, and I'll ask that Clerk Peck email the public comment to the full board that was received. Okay, at this point, I believe Keith, did you have something? We have, we have an agenda item that's later in the agenda, but we have a guest here, and there was a request from administration that we move one of the agenda items up. This would be Agenda Item Eight?
Correct, the referendum proposal.
Okay, so this would be moving referendum project proposal item up to now, because our guest is traveling down to the southern part of the state. Do any board members have any objections to moving Agenda Item Eight, referendum project proposal, up so that we can accommodate our guest and his travels?
I don't see any.
I don't see, or hear any?
Yes. I'll introduce him.
Okay, so hearing none and seeing none. All right, I'm gonna turn this over to you, Dr. Hiltz, talking about referendum project proposal, which has been moved up on the agenda for tonight.
Good. All right, thank you, President Zunkler. Excuse me, yes. So tonight was, just to get everybody up to speed, as you know, we've been exploring this referendum project. It's really intended to help us achieve our strategic goals in a, in a pretty bold way. We've been giving the board and the community monthly updates, and as you might recall, we've gotten feedback from the community and the staff, both through surveys and through the Thought Exchange platform. Over the last several weeks, the messages have been pretty consistent, and we want the community to know that we hear you. These are your schools, and we want to partner with the community in moving this district forward. And frankly, what you'll hear tonight, not to steal Mr. Leatherman's thunder, but people are quite satisfied with the Wassa School District and are not really interested in a reinvention. So tonight, Mr. Leatherman, who you might remember conducted our Fall Community Survey, will be sharing the most recent survey results with us. After you hear the feedback and we ask any questions, just for the board's benefit, I'll be, think about, I'm gonna be asking for some direction from the board as related to next steps. I'll have some suggestions to help inform the board's decision or the board's opinion, but at this time, I'd like to ask Mr. Leatherman to share the results of the survey.
Wonderful. Can everybody hear me? We're good, excellent. Can I understand, Cassie, you're gonna control the presentation on your end?
Yes.
Very good. So if we go to the first slide, just to see the methodology of what we undertook for the district, we spoke with 400 randomly selected households in the school district. The calls were completed between June 1st and the 12th of this month. The average interview time was 15 minutes. Non-response rate was 4.5%, very low. This is actually a very good time to phone. People are home and people are willing to talk. Just to give you an idea, the survey we did last fall, we set up appointments with approximately half of the folks then, because people are out and about, busy with what's going on in the current environment, less than 10% were completed by appointment. The overall results are predictable, plus or minus 5% to 95 out of 100 cases. So the sample, the methodology is exactly the same as what we undertook last fall. Some demographics, just to go through quickly with you to show the parameters of the sample. Self-home only households were 38%, landline only households were 14%, and 48% indicated they had both a landline and a cell phone. If we go to the next slide, demographics, the first four bars are the red line of the in the school district. 36% had been here for, in the district for 10 years or less. Just over 1 in 5 had been in the district for over 30 years. The median comes in roughly above 12 years of living in the school district. 16% indicated they had preschool children. 30% indicated that they had children attending the Wassa School District. And 67% were empty nesters. Empty nesters is not meant to imply in age demographics, simply the lack of presence of a child. Renters were a quarter of the sample, and basically amongst the homeowners, it split right at about 150,000, with 34% under, if reporting that their home was valued at 150,000, 36 at over 150,000. A couple of political questions. 4% more folks indicated they were Republicans. The Democrat was 17% independent. The self-described conservative versus liberal versus moderate, 52% indicated they were conservative, 27% moderate, 17% liberal. And then finally, on demographics, the median age of the survey comes in roughly at about 46 years old, with 26% indicated they're 18- to 34-year-olds, and 18% over the age of 65. Being education attainment is how some college experience, albeit short of college graduation. 37% indicated that they were actual college graduates, or they had a postgraduate degree. 30% had graduated high school or did not graduate from high school. One change from the fall survey is, and it's not surprising with the environment that we're in, is the financial situation in the household. In the fall, we had approximately 36, 37% indicated they're financially stressed. That's up to 46% indicated that they're financially stressed. So with the economy, the shutdown, and all of those things, it has impacted people's concern of the financial situation. Now, just to give you some context though to that number, in 2009, 2010, in the height of the recession, the financially stressed, self-described financially stressed household number was over 60% in most school districts. So we're now, we're nowhere near what it was during the recession a decade ago, but it's something you keep your eye on moving forward. And then the last couple, mid-11, 49, 51, and then we divided the district based on new numbers, with the east of the Wisconsin River being 35%, west of the Wisconsin River being 65%. So I would say, are there any questions on methodology?
I have one. I have one. Hi, Peter, this is Tricia. I do have a question. Can we go back to the last slide, Cassie? So I'm looking at the households, and there seems to be an error here, because you're at over 100, because this 67% is quite alarming to me. Where is the inaccuracy in this? Household with preschoolers, school district children, and empty nesters?
Well, those are actually combined. They're not now a distinction. So you'll have households with preschoolers that have foster residence, but children in the whole district.
I understand. That makes more sense. Okay, thank you.
Anything else? All right. So we revisited some of the atmospheric questions, just to see if anything had changed in the new normal we're living in, with distance learning and everything like that. And there has not been any sort of change in people's positivity or negativity of the atmospherics of the district. There is a growing, and I'll point it out in the research, it's gonna be very obvious, a bit of a disconnect. People are focused on national issues and statewide issues, and not so much at the local government level, through no photo bureau, between COVID, between everything that's happened over the last month, coming out of where I'm at in Minneapolis. The overall evaluation of quality of schools, last fall, you had 94% positive, this time 90% positive. Still very strong, a little bit of drop in the excellent, but they did move it to the only fair or poor category, even by the norm, excellent rating across the Midwest is about 21%. So you're still 50% higher, very strong. What do folks like most? These two questions are open-ended. And what folks like most still in the district? Your folks are focused on programs and curriculum. If we combine the 19% of the variety of programs offered and the 5% variety curriculum, 1 in 4 pointing to some sort of aspect of what is being taught in the classroom. 17% point to boost teaching, they're focused on personnel, and then the actual results of the education, whether it's good education or high achievement stats at 11%. You have a variety of other things, but the two that dominate in the Wassa School District is what they like most is being the programs, the curriculum, and the teachers. We follow up with what's the most serious issue facing the district. What led to this was overspending, basically unchanged from last fall. What did change is the percent saying nothing. In 2000, last fall, you had 25% indicating nothing, and that dropped by 15 points. Those are the boosters. They're positive about everything in the district. It's still higher than the norm, it's about 8% right now, but it dropped. Where do those folks go? A new category came up in this survey, specifically 11% pointing to the facilities proposal, and more specifically, the closing of schools. And so that's really the significant change coming on this far from last fall. In the time of learning from home, a lot of districts that we pulled now over the past month have seen the numbers shift on this question. They have not shifted here. How is the district doing in meeting the learning needs of all students? Most, only, some are very few. The 66% was extraordinarily high when I visited with you last year. It remained the same. What most districts have seen happen is the all going into the most, because then when we follow up with the most, only, some are very few, you have the typical pattern of the learning from home aspect that's really affecting those that are struggling, minorities, underachievers, average students, and special education. But yours did hold at that 2/3, an extraordinarily high level. A couple statements that we kept in from last fall. This district did a good job of spending taxpayers' money effectively and efficiently. You can see there's a nine-point drop, but disagreement did not increase significantly. What increased is uncertainty. And similarly, there's an eight-point drop on the question. Schools are good investors, and I would support a property tax increase for that investment. The agreement dropped from 65 to 57, but the red bar in this specific question shows us what the core opposition is, because they don't know how much, they don't know what it's for, they just don't support any sort of property increase. The 23% is a very manageable number. Anytime that is under 30%, it gets most districts that have a chance of being very successful at the polls, but similarly, you see the seven-point increase in uncertainty. On the job performance rating, we see drops across the board in the positivity, and we see no drop in negativity. Statistically significant, all the changes, people moving from positive to unsure. About 1 in 5 to 1 in 4 people really have not been following what's going on locally with the schools at this point, and that is, that accounts for the change. It'd be very much a concern if over the next six, seven months, you had a drop and they all went negative. They did not go negative. They went into an uncertain category from a lack of information and a lack of following what is happening. What did change and remains extraordinarily strong, I mean, it did drop a little bit, but still, in comparison, the overall financial management of the district, this time 68% positive to 25% negative. The negative went up four points, not statistically significant. The comparison of this, the norm across the Midwest is 50% positive. You have a strong reservoir of goodwill when it comes to the financial management of the district, and a lot of credibility about how you manage your finances. I did not put up the comparison until last fall on the people's perceptions on property taxes, simply because it was, I'd almost feared a 1 for 1. You have 34% indicating that their taxes are very high or somewhat high, 52% saying about average. School taxes, 33% very high or somewhat high, 52% about average. You folks are still what I classified, when I visited last, last fall, you are of the type of tax climate. You're one of very few. What's a hostile property tax climate? Any type of very high, somewhat high, goes above 50%. And we've had school districts over the past couple of years, the highest, 77% of very high, somewhat high category. This doesn't mean that everybody's thrilled to have a property tax increase. What it shows is the amount of resistance when you're talking about taxes. Your folks are willing and continue, are, are, to be willing to have a conversation. One thing that, this is kind of the foreshadows, people's feelings on the two plans we tested, and I mentioned this back when I presented in the fall. Overall, people don't see any problems with buildings. Do the school buildings and facility meet the needs of educating today's children? In the fall, it was 94%. This month, it was 88% saying yes. A little bit of shift, a softness in intensity, moving from strongly yes to just the soft yes, but still, almost 9 out of 10 believe that the buildings are, are meeting, are meeting the needs of educating today's children. And so when you see this sort of result, it's imperative that you like any changes being discussed with educational outcomes. And when I go back to the slide of what folks like most, and the curriculum and programming being so prominent, most districts that have success with bond referendum, that are specifically thinking bond referendum planning, not only to the actual outcome of the education, but what can be provided with a curriculum and programming. So you're not moving people from a position of no, you're moving them from yes to strongly With, we saw this about 1 in 5 people, 1 in 4 people that really are disconnected from the school district right now, based on national and statewide issues, and it follows, you know, when you ask specifically, are they following the facilities plans discussion? It is limited at this point. Only 5% indicated they're following them very closely, 37% somewhat closely, but 57% are saying not really, or not at all. When we follow up with three statements, it gains the perception of the facilities discussion. Do they think the district is doing a good job of involving the community? 54% say yes. Will the, is the district considering plans and options that will benefit staff? 57% say yes. Will the plan be fair to local taxpayers? 52% say yes. If you have a majority agreement in all three statements, the disagreement is low comparatively. What is high is the uncertain category, and that goes back to 57% of people not following discussions. You're probably between 25 and 30% don't have enough information to even give an assessment on these three specific states. We put a new list on here and asked about characteristics of a facilities plan, and asked in each of these characteristics if it was very important to be included, somewhat important, not to, or not at all important. I decided to provide the not to or not at all important, and that's the red on the chart, because basically you have vast majorities thinking everything is at least somewhat important. Now, some of these compete against each other, but, and that's kind of, you know, threading the needle of what a plan, what a plan would work. If we look at the most intense, and look at it as a hierarchy, those that are saying very important. You have low transportation costs, 52% very important, total importance at 84%. Valuable student enrollment, 50% very important, 81% importance. What comes in third place is keeping the same grade configuration. It is actually the second lowest total importance, but third highest in the very important category at 44%. And then keeping neighborhood schools open, 40% very important, total importance at 72%. And you can see going down the list from safety and security, creating operational efficiencies, create space for multi-specialists, equitable buildings, minimizing transportation times, and minimal school transitions. What the takeaway here is they're all important, and it's just the hierarchy. The more money, if it was one versus the other, you'll have one group that is going to be upset, and one group that will support, and you're gonna see that bear out when we look at the two plans specifically. Has the overall tax increase predisposition changed? No, it hasn't. You basically have 22% that are for any property tax increase, 23% against all property tax increase, and 52% that are persuadable. Once again, showing us that the core opposition is that 23% number we saw earlier. When we look at, would they be willing to support a tax increase for a bond? You have, you have support for a property tax increase in the district. Only 30% say nothing. And in all the successful referendums we've worked on over the past couple of years, we always say that the nothing needs to be under 35%. Now, I include these two slides and these two questions on the survey, because I want to see how concerned people are about taxes, realizing that both plans, because of the expired debt, can be implemented without a property tax increase. This shows that even if there was a property tax increase, people are willing to have the discussion. So what it comes down to is the specifics of the plan itself, and not a tax hostility that is coming in, and, and that would potentially down a referendum. and that would potentially down a referendum. When we test the one-hundred-and-fifty-million-dollar bond referendum, and that's the plan that merges the elementary schools, changes the grade configuration and those sorts of things. We have forty-three percent support to fifty-two percent opposition. Six percent are unsure. These sorts of questions, referendum questions, we always look at intensity also. So strong support is twice, is half of what strong opposition is, ten to twenty-two percent. So it's telling us the opponents really oppose more than the supporters really support. So we follow up and ask a question on the reason for their support or opposition. The blue bars indicate the reasons of support. The red are the reasons of opposition. The blue bars, one of the first things in this, what I mentioned, was foreshadowed on the end, their perception of the buildings and facilities. There are very few supporters saying it's needed. They're supporting it because education's important and there's no tax increase. But specifically saying it's needed, only six percent said it was needed. On the opponent's side, you can see what the issue is with the one-hundred-and-fifty-million-dollar plan. One in six residents oppose the plan, saying they don't want schools closed. Twelve percent indicated more spending. Nine percent want the tax decrease. And six percent don't like the grade configuration change. So you have actually twenty-two percent specifically pointing to the closing schools or the grade configuration change. Getting into the details of the plan, realizing that, you know, the property tax hostility and what oftentimes limits a potential for a bond referendum isn't in place. Now, we went through six statements in support of one-hundred-and-fifty-million-dollar bond and six statements in opposition, just to see what sort of impact these statements have. The most impactful was, it just makes sense. We'll go to the next slide, guess, there we go. It makes sense, the district has expiring debt, and there would be no property tax increase. Forty-one percent said make them much more likely to support. Thirty-four percent indicated somewhat more likely. The others kind of fall. The next five, four, the deferred maintenance projects are necessary. It provides safety and security enhancements. It will expand services and opportunities and create equitable buildings. It has an impact between sixty-four and seventy-one percent with about a quarter, but third of people say much more likely. The least impactful argument of the support statements is providing the district cost savings. It was made, folks, much more likely, twenty percent. Total impact, sixty-two percent. We'll go to the next slide and opposition statements. You can see there's much more impact on some of the specifics on this bond. Eliminating the two middle schools, forty-two percent said it made them much more likely to oppose. This plan is not needed, thirty-nine percent much more likely to oppose. Losing neighborhood schools and concerned with the grade configuration switch, thirty-eight percent much more likely to oppose. Time on the bus, that is also impactful. And then, because there's not a property tax increase, you do have people that realize that there could be a decrease. The actual, the general reason typically the district opposes isn't there. The property taxes are going up too quickly. So when we come back and post-test it to see if there's any movement, there's very little movement on the one-hundred-and-fifty-million-dollar question. After weighing out basically the six arguments of support and the six arguments in opposition. We started out at forty-three percent support. We come back with forty-four percent support. We started out with fifty-three percent opposition. We come back with forty-nine percent opposition. If you can see though, the strong opposed moved from twenty-two percent to twenty-seven percent. So actually, if the strong support only went up two points, it actually, in intensity, it weighed out more for the strong opposition to the strong support. So then we came back and asked one other potential bond referendum package. Go to the next slide, the one-hundred-and-eighty-million-dollar plan. And that basically would keep the schools open and do the deferred maintenance and not do grade configuration changes or anything like that. It's actually supported a little bit less. It's supported forty percent, opposition at fifty percent. It's strong support versus strong opposition. It's actually four times higher for strong opposition than strong support. When we ask the reasons, this one, because there's operational savings in the one-hundred-and-fifty-million-dollar plan. This one kind of cut, you have a group of people that are willing to support something. Some will only support something that doesn't close schools. Some that will only support a plan that gives operational savings. And so what you have is, if this comes up, ten percent support this plan because it keeps the schools open. Twelve percent oppose this plan because there's no operational savings. So they kind of wash out with each other. You're just changing support and opposition based on the specifics. But keeping in mind, you have twenty-five percent that oppose anything. That's why it's just course training. And then, when we ask for a plan preference, I call this the statisticians nightmare. Essentially, go to the next one. You have thirty-six percent that support the one-hundred-and-fifty-million-dollar plan. You have thirty-four percent indicating they support the one-hundred-and-eighty-million-dollar plan. Twenty-six percent say neither. Intensity is a wash at eighteen to sixteen percent. The key takeaway of this section is, everything is, there is support out there to do something. Seventy-four percent indicate they prefer something. Only twenty-six percent say neither. That twenty-six percent is very, very manageable. It just comes down to the specifics and having a plan that's as broad as possible. And so, you know, it really is, it'd be very troubling that this came in and you had fifty, sixty percent of people saying, no, I don't support anything. Keep in mind, ninety percent of people think the buildings are fine. You have wide support to do something. And then finally, we revisited the grade configuration change at the high schools. Last fall, we had twenty-eight percent support. This time, we only have twenty-four percent support. And opposition moved from forty, was actually the same at forty-six to forty-five. A little bit of uptick in uncertainty. Like I mentioned, that board, this issue is not fine. Shall we say, you have basically sixty-eight percent of people taking the position, but a third of people, they're not even sure on it. And you can see the intensity on this one, with the connections people have with high schools, where strong support is at two percent and strong opposition is at twenty-six percent. So I think I've run a little bit longer than twenty minutes, but I'm happy to answer any questions right now.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. Board members, do you have any questions for Peter or Dr. Hiltz?
Yeah, Ka here. I have a question. Can you hear me? Can everyone hear me? Okay, thank you. So with the demographic study, did you guys ask the question if they were likely to vote in November?
Yes, and yes, and because there's so many people saying they're likely to vote, there were no statistically significant changes between everybody and likely voters on any of the bond referendum questions that we looked at.
Okay. And then I just have a comment. So sixty-seven percent of empty nesters and, you know, just looking at the graphs and everything, it seems like there needs to be some public education by the district or at least some marketing on behalf of the district to, you know, let those voters know that maybe, you know, changing of the school system would be helpful. So I don't know what that looks like. But if the, you know, administration, you know, would agree to that, or if we came up with a plan on how to do that, I think that'd be a good idea. Since those empty nesters, they don't have current children in the school district. They would probably need some education or, you know, at least some marketing on the school district, on how current, currently how it runs and what the operations are day-to-day. Thank you.
Ka, thanks for asking that question. This is a good chance to speak to everybody about the different communication phases around a referendum. At this point, what we're doing is we're collecting feedback that informs the development of the project. If the board in August decides to move forward with a referendum project, then we would have an extensive, about an eight-week information campaign that would include all those strategies that you mentioned, Ka. But they can only go about eight weeks. People get tired of hearing the message after about two months. So thank you for that feedback. But just as a broad idea around communication with referenda, that's the general plan. Thank you.
Beth and Lance have questions. Could you call on them since you're unmuted?
Me? Beth, did you have a question?
Yes, I'm looking at the data. It sounds like our taxpayers support something. They value the school district and think that we use the financial resources well. I'm wondering what our experts' thoughts would be about the support for an operational referendum only.
Operational. We didn't really test that. I can speak a little bit to it, Beth, and I'm going to look at Steve Shonert too, if he has any or anybody else from Nexus. We didn't test an operational referendum question. If the board has an interest in that, we could certainly develop some possible questions, you know, some possible investments for an operational if the board decides to go that way. And then we could test it with the community.
Lance has a question as well. Beth is still talking.
Closing neighborhood schools, but that the taxpayers did support something. The district award money to work with.
Agreed.
Yeah, and to the superintendent's point, what we did, asked the question specifically, and we can't, with the touch survey coming up, there's nothing. You know, I always look at those atmospheric questions. And because on election day, you want people to walk into the voting booth and just make a simple decision, a cost-benefit analysis, and not bring any additional baggage into the voting booth, whether it was a decision made twenty years ago, a personality issue, anything like that. Both surveys from the fall and this survey, when I look at the atmospheres, you don't have any of that baggage that would give me pause. It just really comes down to the specifics of what you're talking about, whether it's a bond or an operating levy.
Okay, thank you.
Who's talking?
Yes.
Okay. Who's talking?
You can go ahead with your question, Lance.
Probably Keith and Peter. You know, we want to use these surveys to try to predict what the community would support before we undergo the time and expense and energy of that educational component. Yet without that informational campaign, the people answering the survey don't have the information they need to know. You know, I mean, if I wasn't on the board, I wouldn't know why it's such an educational benefit to have a model-sized school. I may actually have the opposite opinion. I may think that the smaller school would be better. Now that I've learned so much on the board, I know why that's not the case. But if I wasn't on the board, I wouldn't know that. And if I was taking the survey, I wouldn't know that. The financial part, I think, is a little bit easier. You can kind of grasp some of the paying teachers to travel and, you know, multiple buildings are more expensive than one, that kind of thing. But the educational part is pretty tricky. So how do we balance that? That we don't want to go all the way forward and then find out too late that it's not supported, but, you know, we're not really getting informed survey takers.
I can answer part of that in the sense, it's important to remember that on election day, you will have anywhere between twenty-five and forty percent that don't have any idea that you're actually having a referendum. They don't pay attention. And so they don't have the level of detail and the nuance of detail. If you give them too much information, what you do is make them atypical, where you're trying to convince them in a public opinion survey of a position. And that's why if we look at, I always do the pre-test and then a post-test with the messages in between. Because if I just read through the statement, the support arguments, I could write a question, solicit any answer that we want. And so it really is walking the fine line. But it's important to understand where people are at with their experience. Because most people won't go beyond their experience and their opinions and attitudes, especially in a cutting environment where there's going to be so many messages and so many communications to be following. You don't want, you don't want a survey of atypical respondents to sit there and behind it.
Peter, to follow up with Lance's question, I wonder if you have any experience or insights into how many points can a quality information campaign move survey results? Or maybe I'm asking the wrong question.
Well, depending on, you know, a successful referendum is, you know, multifaceted, you know. It's a, first off, it has to be a facilities plan that's likely to support. Then you have to have strong communication, strong vote yes, all of those aspects going. What it comes down to is with the facilities planning process, you know, there are four, well, there's three major issues that come into opposition. Number one is always property tax, okay? That's set aside because you have ten percent of people that want the property tax increase because, you know, with the expiring debt. Of two other major hurdles that come into play with a potential bond referendum is with your closing schools or when you're doing some sort of attendance boundary change because you're urging schools. And so that, those two factors, you can make, you can't make cohesive arguments on, you know, the educational advantages and everything. But a lot of people, there's an attachment there. And so, you know, you can, through communications and everything, you know, tip the people's perception of that cost-benefit question. But the thing on this one is, there is a cost. It's just a specific dollar amount. And so it is harder to change people's minds on something they view when we look at that list on characteristic facilities and what's important to them.
If we look at some of the lack of information that people have, you know, I think of when we talked about freezing salaries and one of the comments that we received from many staff members were, was we, how can we think about this expensive referendum if we can't even afford salaries? You know, thinking to myself, if our own staff don't understand that this referendum would actually save operational expenses, there's no way that we would, we could think that the general public is going to understand that if our own staff doesn't understand that this would actually save millions of dollars every year. So it's hard because we're trying to predict what the public would vote. And they're obviously not informed at this point.
And to that point, I've been doing this twenty-six years now. And when I started, when I joined the company, we always had a question on the survey of, do you understand the difference between a bond referendum and an operating levy? It literally is a universal constant. It's like pi. Twenty to twenty-four percent of people in the community can actually tell you that bonds are for building and operating levy except for the operations of the district. The rest of the people have no idea. So we don't even ask it anymore because, and that's your point, Lance, you know, if we have a one-hundred-and-fifty-million-dollar bond referendum, what about the savings on the operational side? They all view it as one item. Basically, except for one in four that understand financial, school district finances.
Okay, Teresa.
I mean, in your opinion, Peter, do you think that, and you've got a lot of referendum experience, do you think that trying to educate the public on the educational benefits, for example, a model-sized school is simply too difficult? I mean, would it be easier to say, we have these two old schools, we want to build one new school to house all the kids from the two old schools, because these two old schools are just old and they don't have air conditioning and they don't meet our needs? And that's kind of easy for the public to understand, even though we know that it also provides a big educational benefit because of the model-sized structure? I mean, is, is the educational part, is it too hard to explain?
Yeah. It, you need to put it in as layman person as possible. But the, the model size is kind of like insider baseball. It, it just, it has to make sense. And, and you don't want to, you don't want to over-educate, you know, but it's, it's bullet points, you know, the, whether clear or bad, the current environment, social media and small bullet points and not a lot of reading of content.
Okay. So just a couple of comments. So, first of all, I don't remember which slide it was. I can't get back to it now with my screen, but I think it's noteworthy to point out things that are important to the public based on that survey you did, is that there's a bit of a catch-22. We did see, it stated that reducing inefficiencies was important to people, but it also said keeping neighborhood schools was important to people. But we know that neighborhood schools are creating inefficiencies. So I guess my first question is, I guess, you know, of those, which was more important? But the second thing that I want to point out is, the theme of uncertainty kept resonating throughout the results of the survey, which only makes sense in this time. And I'm really concerned that that's going to continue to be something that skews individuals through November, quite frankly. And I'm wondering, in your experience, what, you mentioned 25 to 40% of voters are uninformed voters, going to the polls uninformed, Peter. Is that every election? Because I am concerned about the level of uncertainty with the world that we live in. And I'm wondering, you know, we're looking at potentially November, and the reason for that is because we have more people and we hear from more voices, but ideally, there'd be informed voices. And say if we were looking at April, when the uncertainty is hopefully cleared up a bit, is that something, though, that you still see that 25 to 40% of uninformed voters in those smaller elections, if you will?
Typically, information levels amongst the voters will be higher in, in special elections as opposed to specifically a general presidential election. You know, it really, though, I, there have been districts that have done an outstanding job in communication and getting the message through, and it really, it really comes down to timing, when, when the emphasis is going to be. You know, I can tell you that through many presidential elections, the key window coming up here is back to school, because the, whatever sort of conventions we see from the Democrats and the Republicans, the kind of, you know, are going to be happening in the next couple of months, and it'll kind of quiet down for the first couple of weeks of September. And that's the gap in order to fill it and you won't have any of the national or state election clutter. And that's just a word, not a negative or a positive attribute given to it, but it's hard to cut through at that point. And so you, you still do have that window available with effective communication to get it out there.
Any other questions? Oh, yeah, Teresa has one. Go ahead, Teresa.
I just have a couple of comments. Closing schools is a big issue here, and, and people love their neighborhood schools. So from the, and when we talk about them not being informed, I think they were informed about very well what schools would be closed, what busing would probably add to a child's day, and the new configuration. And as a former educator, I know it's a good plan, but when it comes to try to explain to people who love their neighborhood school, I don't think they'll buy the efficiency element. I, I remember the last time we went to referendum and we had all these listening sessions. Sometimes we had as few as four people there, and there were more board members and administrators. So trying to get the word out about how this would impact their child's learning, I think is going to be a very difficult thing to do. And I, I just don't think that this is the time that we can do it. So that was just my comment. So thank you.
Can you guys have the other board member questions?
Are there any other board member questions?
No? Go ahead, Teresa.
All right, so. Okay, so it, it doesn't look like we have any other board member questions, so I'm going to ask Dr. Hiltz what the next steps would be at this point.
All right. Thank you, President Zunker. Yeah, so as you heard, there's, there's a lot of good news in this, in this survey. The community is, has a great deal of confidence in the district. They feel we're doing a good job of educating students. They think we're taking good care of their investments. But clearly, they want to keep their neighborhood schools. Clearly, they're concerned about extending the transportation time. And, and just as a note, not only was that the message in this survey, but that was the message that we continued to hear from the community and the staff through the thought exchange process as well. So we're pretty confident that this is the prevailing view about the, the plan. Another piece of good news is that people continue, they, they support continued investment in, in the, in the schools. So as we met a couple of times just since last week, two paths are emerging. And as I said at the beginning, what I'm looking for tonight from the board is direction. I mean, we could continue down the path that we, that we started on, but we don't feel it's going to be supportive. Two other possible paths. One would be to leave all of our schools in place. You know, we could, we could develop a plan that would invest in completing some deferred maintenance and some educational improvements, the, the safety and security enhancements, all those things that we saw in the feedback that the community supported. And while that would satisfy, you know, those, those community wishes, it would leave us some significant issues. One would be the, the boundary issues. So we'd likely have to move an elementary school from the west side attendance area to the east. And we would have some other ongoing issues. Most prominently would be some of the, we wouldn't have a location for Montessori or any way to combine our alternative programs, but we could go that route. So just leave everything in place and just do a lot of, of improvements. The second option would be, again, to say to the community, we hear you. You, you love your neighborhood schools, but we wonder if they would entertain the option of maybe merging one or two. You know, I, I heard Mr. Trollope mention a little earlier, you know, that possibility, and maybe a new school to serve, you know, some of our populations. But perhaps if an elementary school or two were merged with a specific purpose of creating a space for Montessori or the alternative, maybe that would be a, a more acceptable proposal, and it would still give us a, a few of the, of the efficiencies we've talked about and move us a little further down the road. So I guess those are the two, that, the two options we've, that have kind of emerged in our initial conversations. And I want the board to know that whichever path the board wishes to explore, we would continue to work with the, the task force to develop that concept. We'll test those concepts with another survey to the community, so you can, you can be informed as to, as to what their wishes would be. We would bring all that back to the board as soon as possible. It's probably mid to late July. So I'm wondering if the board, what path or paths is the board interested in continuing to explore? I'll mute for questions.
I know that for me, I feel like we probably need more information on both of those that you just stated. I don't know if other board members, I certainly wouldn't be able to commit to one way or another tonight, but maybe other board members want to weigh in as well.
Yeah, I, I think I'd like to have information, but, you know, I would lean probably more towards the direction of number two. What I wouldn't want to do is approve a large referendum that invests, you know, $100 million into a system that I think includes too many buildings, just because we can. And if we, if we don't think we can merge some schools and improve both the efficiency and education this November, you know, I would rather do something smaller and pay down some debt and, you know, think, think bigger in April or next year or something, as opposed to passing a very large referendum now that really takes any good-sized referendum off the table for, you know, another decade. So the idea of something like we've been talking about, but on a smaller scale, I think, is attractive. When I first heard that, that original proposal, I thought, wow, this would be great if it passed, but it's not going to. Because I, I think you, I think you always have to think about the yes votes and the no votes. And if you create too many groups of no votes, you're not going to pass a, pass a referendum. That's how we've always talked about it in the past.
Can I speak to that?
Go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Lance. You know, as we began to kind of redesign this project in our minds after getting the feedback, we also are, are thinking about our, our high schools. You know, that, that question came up quite a bit. And, and frankly, we were talking about the idea of doing two referenda, just planning ahead, doing one this fall, and then another one two or three years down the road, where we could continue, Bob, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we could continue to do it for no tax impact as we structure the debt appropriately. And the purpose for the high schools would be to develop the, that academy kind of a model, where students are exposed to more, you know, exposure to, you know, the career exploration. They get real hands-on kinds of learning as they, as they progress through their high school career. But that takes a number of years to, to design. So just want to throw that, that option out there for, for consideration as well.
Just a question for clarif, oh, is Pat speaking?
Yeah, I just have, I guess, a comment, Teresa. That is, as you look, whatever the dollar mark is, whether it's 60, 80, 180 million dollars, to me, that while it's relevant, I don't know that it's necessarily the important ask right now. What I think is missing or was missing in the, the last go-around was simply the connection between this is what we want to accomplish and this is why. For example, if we approach this from the standpoint of, we want to have a facility that is going to work for Montessori, just as an example, that's one very specific strategic direction that we may have, and I don't even know, you know, if that's the direction we want to go, but whatever. That's one thing we want to accomplish. Here's what we propose, or here's how we propose to do it, and here's what the, the overall value would be. Second, John Muir, we have safety issues at John Muir, we have space concern, we have this and that. Here's what we would want to do at John Muir, here's what that would cost, and here's what we get out of it. If we took a number of those, I don't know if it's three or if it's 30, and laid that out, and not, and I guess do more point solutions for some of the strategic issues that we have in the district, would that be another way to ensure that people are understanding clearly what we're doing? And assuming, right, they, they know, Lance, right, that it is inefficient, but, you know, if we can't change their, their minds on the efficiency quadrant, I don't know that that's worth going after. We just have to accept our reality and work within those boundaries.
Agreed. That's exactly what we're going to.
So Dr. Hiltz agrees with that comment. So the thing that I was going to say is, yeah, I'm, I'm inclined to number two as well, but it's just we don't have enough information tonight, I feel. But I'll tell you, we've been talking for, for years about the inefficiencies with the number of schools that we have open. And this is something I even, when I first got on the board and toured every single school, it stood out to me that why do we have these schools when these schools are right here? And we don't have altern, a, a specific place for our alternative schools. And for Montessori, you know, we are losing students in the district, because Montessori doesn't go all the way through eighth grade. So students or families that want to continue that Montessori education in seventh and eighth grade, they're going over to Evers. They're doing IDEA. And I know this firsthand, quite frankly. And the Montessori setup just isn't what it's supposed to be at Horace Mann. You know, they're supposed to be on the same level and be able to have their meals together, and they're on different levels, and, and they just can't expand like they want to. So that's critical. But when we think about housing or a, a space for our alternative, we also know that peer, you know, peer, that, that's been a huge issue. If students are going to go into peer, but we don't have the room for them, then they stay in the classrooms that they're currently in until a space opens up for them. So between that and then, of course, our alternative high school, being able to put everything, if that would be feasible, into one building for our alternative schooling would be really phenomenal, really amazing. And, and then I guess my question for Dr. Hiltz is, I'm just seeking clarification on option two. So that would be potentially, it would, it would be eliminating a couple of schools so that we could reduce the inefficiency, but have space for alternative school. But would this also move the boundary line? Because it seems like that would be ideal to, to have that focus at the same time as well. Okay, I'm muted.
When you say boundary line, you mean moving some students from west to east to balance the enrollment?
Yes.
Yes, that would have to be, that's certainly a strategic outcome that we're trying to achieve. So yeah, I think what you said is accurate.
Okay.
Thank you. Go ahead, Teresa.
Uh-oh, I'm in trouble. Just left.
Do you want to ask us, Teresa?
No, I, I came back. I'm okay. I, I kind of agree with Pat in the sense that you have to be real specific. We've been talking about the needs of John Muir forever, and that can't be left out of this equation. And then I'm also wondering, are we doing anything about the school forest? Because that's really important, and it serves all of our children, and it just seems to keep getting left. And so, to me, that's a very important thing. And I, I think that you have to be very honest with the, the people about what schools that you're going to close and what kind of boundaries are going to be changed, because that's another issue parents are very concerned about, especially in my neighborhood. They've talked about how they just changed, they just changed boundaries two years ago, and they're not too inclined to want to have to do it again. So I, I think being honest with the people, and I liked Pat's idea of this is this, you're voting for this, this is this, and you can go from there. But that's just my comment.
Thank you, Teresa. Those are excellent points. Yes, we didn't speak to the, the other projects, because frankly, we're still, as, as we start, we wanted to focus on the main objectives first. But yes, the Environmental Learning Center at the school forest would, would likely continue to be a, a, a project in this referendum. We would talk about the possibility of Tom Field. Again, those would all, we'd have to revisit all those different aspects of the project, and we would bring those back to the board for consideration.
Oop, you're going to want to mute, Teresa.
One other question, probably for you, Bob. I know that in our last referendum, we had a deferred maintenance part of the bond referendum, though that also impacts our operational budget in the sense that that's one of the reasons we've been able to keep the buildings and grounds operational budget flat that and our energy efficiency borrowing. What are, you know, what are the restrictions there? Where, you know, what lines do we have to worry about in terms of how much we can do that is actually called deferred maintenance, if it actually impacts our operational budget? Is there any restriction to that?
No restriction, as long as we're, we disclose in our question itself that we're using it for deferred it for deferred maintenance. We can call it just about anything we want as long as it's for projects, capital improvements, things like that, as long as we call it a--
So it's not, you know, so obviously it's not, you know, salaries, compensation, that kind of thing, but it's the actual, you know, if we're hiring out third parties or materials, that sort of thing. And it could impact our operational budget even if it's part of the bond referendum?
Absolutely. No.
Okay, I'm going to unmute. Go ahead. I think Bob's still talking.
As an example, you could reduce your capital improvement budget for a stretch, but eventually you'd have to bring back your capital improvement budget. It couldn't be reduced forever. Eventually, you spend your bond money, and you'd have to bring back a capital improvement budget.
Right. Yeah, and we're not going to take a 10- or 20-year bond to borrow money to spend on maintenance that, you know, isn't going to happen until 10 years from now.
Correct. Correct. And it's worth mentioning that we capitalized on a lot of that stuff already with Nexus's help through the energy efficiency exemption. So we did borrow a significant amount of money for projects that were specifically required to have efficiency measurements that come with them. We've done a lot of that.
Okay, are there other board member questions?
Lee has a question.
Oh, Lee does? Okay. So we'll call on Lee. And then the other question I'm going to have for Dr. Hiltz is whether you have enough direction and guidance from the board. But all right, I'm going to unmute and turn it over to Lee for his question.
Okay. I have a little more of a comment. I relate the second option better than what I've heard, but I want to hear a lot more. I too am concerned that we need to really target a couple of places where we can encourage the bond here as long as I can. You know, it's just something that we need to address in certain areas. It also makes a very positive face in terms of the program, which I think is a true direction that we can work with, if we can work with. And also the whole idea of the data needs to be used in the opportunity. Those are some things we need to do with that, because it might be a bullet point in certain areas.
Thank you. Do you want me to wrap it up? Tricia, did you?
Yeah, do you have, do you have direction from us?
I think so, yeah. Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Lee, for that. I hear what you're saying. So what I'm sensing from the board is you're open to these options, and you're right, you need a lot more detail. Like I said, we just got these results last week, and it was interesting, we were talking about how we've done a lot of research, we've got a lot of information. What we have to do now is just take that and package it together in a way that supports the district's strategic goals and then the community wishes. And so we've got the parts, we just have to assemble them correctly. So, and we just need a little bit of time to do that. We told the task force we were going to take a week off, so we aren't meeting this week, but we are meeting a week from, we've been meeting weekly. And we'll be meeting a week from Wednesday. And I would say a couple of meetings with them, a couple more meetings with Nexus, a quick community survey, and we would have some, a detailed plan that I hear you asking for. And we'll just continue to explore those options and bring those back if that's good.
Okay, I think that's great. Thank you so much. Thank you to Peter and our guests for your work on this and presentation tonight. We're going to move on to agenda item four for anybody that's watching this live or on video. And it might seem slightly confusing because we were just on agenda item eight, the board agreed to move that item up. We are going back now to agenda item four, and we'll go in order for the remainder of the meeting. So we're at the Whole Child, Whole Losa Short Cycle Report, and going to turn it over to Chris Nyman, Paul Weber, Andrea Sheridan, and John Huding.
Good evening. Thank you, board members. We are going to provide you with, this is the second short cycle report on achievement goal A4. And though this looks and sounds also combined with our required AGR report, this is going to look and sound just a little bit different than it has in the past. We don't have the benefit of having spring data, but we did put, so a little bit of a difference been according on this presentation according to the requirements that DPI provided for us around developing the AGR report at the end of this particular year because of the COVID closures that existed across the state. Cassie, you can go ahead and expand to the next slide. I'll begin here just by providing us with a recap on the current goal. And our current goal still stands as by the spring of 2023, we will provide a 30% increase the number of students meeting or exceeding proficiency levels in reading and writing or the ELA and mathematics portions of local and state assessments. And that is still the goal that we're continuing to focus on, and that's obviously being addressed through a variety of action steps that we've embedded in this particular, and we'll talk in this particular goal, and we'll talk about just a few of those tonight. Cassie, if you want to go ahead and advance to the next slide. Throughout the COVID closure in the district, students were provided with 90 to 120 minutes of virtual learning opportunities between March 16th and June 4th. Those virtual learning opportunities were focused on developmentally appropriate grade level standards. Those standards were collaboratively determined by our district content and instructional coaches and specialists and administrators. Parents were all provided with those standards by grade level and were able to monitor the growth that their children made of those particular standards when we were providing virtual learning during that timeframe. Our spring fast bridge assessments in grades K through three were speaking specifically around AGR and the AGR required reporting of those four grade levels. Were not able to be administered this year due to the inability to factor the assessments in a face-to-face setting. Many of the subtests associated with our fast bridge universal screener are required to be administered in a face-to-face setting, and we didn't have the ability to be able to do that. So as I started the presentation by saying, this will look and sound just a little bit different than it has in the past, typically, we've been able to provide you growth and growth data for each respective grade level from each site. The inability to administer those assessments has been provided us that opportunity this round. In 19, the 2019-20 academic year was also our first time that we were implementing fast bridge screening assessments across all elementary, middle, and high school settings. So we didn't feel comfortable, even though we do have some computer adaptive assessments that we can administer at middle school, high school, and even our intermediate grade levels, administering those, just recognizing the level of familiarity was just not there and wasn't present for staff, recognizing that it was our first year administering these universal assessments. Andrea's going to ahead and provide an overview of AGR, and she'll lead the AGR principals into their presentations about what they covered at their buildings.
Thank you, Mr. Nyman. Good evening, Board of Education. As a requirement of receiving the AGR or the Achievement Gap Reduction Funds from the state of Wisconsin, we're asked to present twice a year to the Board of Education updates around how our students in our AGR schools are performing academically. As Mr. Nyman has indicated, due to COVID-19, we were unable to administer our screener, which we would use to track their progress, Rats Bridge. We are not the only, a district around the state was unable to administer that test or a test in the spring. So now we received guidance from the Department of Public Instruction indicating what they would be looking for in this presentation, which we would provide to our Board of Education. They asked that our administrators at our AGR school would provide brief pieces of narrative information. One, what was the overall experience at a particular AGR school during COVID-19? Also, what went well or highlight successes and academic achievements? And then also identify if a school had experienced any challenges during COVID-19. So that's the process that we followed, and in the next several slides, you'll see narratives provided from our AGR principals. Given the timing of this presentation, some of our AGR principals are currently not in their offices and potentially maybe on a vacation with their family. So I'll be providing some brief updates on a few of the slides. We'll start at Franklin Elementary. Mrs. White, our principal at Franklin is unable to be with us tonight. So I draw your attention to at Franklin, the overall experience during COVID-19 indicated that the one-to-one use of iPads was very successful because students had been taking iPads home at Franklin, so that was not a change in practice or procedures, and students and families are familiar with that practice. In addition, Ms. White indicates that the educators stayed very positive during COVID-19, and also went above and beyond with their professional responsibilities in responding to student needs. A challenge identified at Franklin Elementary was the lack of interpersonal or personal connections. So both our staff and our educators and our families and students were missing those positive connections with their staff at the school. I believe that Ms. Frank is with us, but I'm going to pause for a moment to see if she's online. Okay, I'll go ahead and just highlight a few things for G D Jones School, and if Ms. Frank joins us, we'll stop and pause and give her an opportunity to share her thoughts with us. Again, the overall experience at G D Jones, very positive, and it brought families closer together and created a very cohesive Jones family. So we'll get the positives there. Also, G D Jones staff supported one another with their curriculum, technology, and other resources. This would be due to the tight connections between our core teachers, our on-core teachers, our interventionists, and others. And then the challenge was a lack of attendance or inconsistent participation from some students. Will you speak on behalf of Mrs. Burkhan, who's our principal at Grant School? Overall experiences at Grant, supporting virtual learning, was learning without established expectations prior to pandemic was a bit tricky, in her words. However, our staff and our layers rose to the occasion, together learned and received feedback to help improve that process moving forward. One thing that was identified at Grant that went very well or a success with the use of the lesson model or design that we implemented, and a challenge in to Grant School that some of the staff and our students experienced was attendance, and then again, the lack of a face-to-face relationships between both our students, our families, and our students.
This is Ms. Rosek. Our principal at Hawthorne Hills is unable to be with us tonight. On her behalf, she shares that at Hawthorne Hills, the overall experience was positive in learning how to teach virtually. However, it did seem quite fast and furious when we went pandemic. The teachers did work tirelessly to prepare students, another very positive aspect of what they experienced in the last quarter of learning during the pandemic. Well, very well, if some of the struggling students actually excelled in the virtual environment or the virtual learning environment. And the challenge was that they experienced they didn't have time to teach students how to learn virtually. So if given the opportunity, we would have time to explicitly teach them, for example, how to log into Google Meet, how to mute, how to make sure they're in presentation mode. So again, a challenge they experienced at Hawthorne. I believe Ms. Julie Johnson might be with us, and she'll speak on behalf of--
Okay. We'll just tell them. You want me to tell?
All right, I think I'll speak on behalf--
Andrea?
Yes.
Sorry. The principals don't have the ability to present tonight, so you'll need to do the presentation. Thank you.
All right. On behalf of Lincoln Elementary School, just the overall experience at this school location, while this was not a grand closure, the teachers and families worked really hard together with the students. While well was the collaboration again among the teachers, both core, on-core, and others with the use of technology at the core of that learning experience. A challenge experienced at Lincoln was the access to technology for some students and teachers was difficult at times. So again, we worked very hard to remedy and support both our students and our families. The technology was a challenge.
And then Thomas Jefferson, on behalf of Mr. Johnson, the principal, he's very proud of all the stakeholders at Thomas Jefferson, who successfully navigated the evolving global event to the flexibility and perseverance. What went well was how we quickly submitted it towards the online instruction within days of supporting our staff and our students and our families. And then the challenge that he indicated at Thomas Jefferson was the purpose for some students to be successful with any quality. I believe Mr. Juney is going to conclude our presentation by talking about our--
Yeah, so, good evening, everyone. And just wanted to let you know what we're looking at as far as next steps with this goal. And you can see it's an exciting one. It's meant to be collaborative and supportive and bring more of a focus to the three components that you see there, two A, two B, and three E. And what that first bullet point talks to are some walkthrough observations. So individuals from Longwall along with building principals will just simply conduct a collaborative, supportive walkthrough groups through buildings, maybe visiting some class sites, looking forward, having conversations around the implementation of the, and the practice of those three components there, to build a collective knowledge around those pieces, continue to ingrain the common language around those pieces, and again, just look for these things in practice. For that, and those would lead to more competency and more integration of the core Cs into instruction. And that concludes our overall presentation on academic, our achievement goal number four. Any questions?
Yeah, I have a question. So with the challenges, there was a lot of attendance. That was a challenge. What were the, I guess, the details of that? Like, why were kids not attending these online classes?
Thank you for the question. I think that we would have to go deeper and collect more depth from our families to understand the why behind some of the attendance concerns. I know that through our principal, Lance, when working with the elementary principals during the last quarter of this winter, they identified a student or children within a family or a household that maybe were not online, not engaged in the learning process. That's members of the services staff would reach out via phone or email to make sure to connect the family. If there wasn't a connection, then we also utilized our school resource officers, because first and foremost, we wanted to make sure that our families were safe during the pandemic. And if they were safe and sound, and we found that out through whatever means the school used, then we continued to ask questions of how we can help them through this process of learning if a child or children were not engaged online. So I think we'd have to investigate and gather more information to better understand that. However, our first and foremost, our concern is making sure students and families were safe.
Okay, great. Thank you. Yeah, I think that's something that we really need to explore for the fall, depending on what the plan is going to be for opening in the fall. So if we're going to keep on having virtual classes, then I really would not like to see any students fall behind just because they weren't attending. And so, yeah, I think we need some more information on that.
And along those lines, just in talking to any other district, there was a significant population of students that had the same kind of experience. Doesn't mean we don't want to do something to improve that, but it was a universal experience. So thank you for asking.
Are there other board member questions? Did you not see any other hands up? I'm going to unmute. Are there other board member questions? Just kind of surveying on the screen here. Doesn't seem like it. Okay. Well, I want to thank everybody, Chris, Paul, Andrea, John, for putting together that presentation and for presenting. It was succinct but informative, so thank you. So then we will move on to agenda item five, annual academic standards. This is an action item, and Paul Weber will be presenting on the 2020-2021 district academic standards in a number of subjects.
All right, good evening, everybody. Just to give you a little background again on the standards, standards are here to specify what students should know and be able to do in a particular subject area, and they-- And they really serve as targets for teaching and learning. The reason we have standards is also to enable stakeholders to know what students should be learning while they're in school. In our state, all state standards serve as a model. As local school boards, they can either accept or reject and put in place their own standards if that's what they decide to do. I don't know a district in the state that does that. Nearly everybody adopts the state standards for their curriculum. Wisconsin's guiding principles for teaching and learning are used to inform and design the implementation of all the academic standards. And there's four principles that these are based on. Every student has the right to learn. Instruction must be rigorous and relevant. Purposeful assessment drives instruction and affects learning. And learning is a collaborative responsibility. With that in mind, school boards are required by Wisconsin Act 55, Section 120.12 of the state statute to notify the parents and guardians of students enrolled in the school district of the student academic standards that will be in effect for this school year. Boards must provide this notification annually prior to the beginning of the school term. So that's what we're doing tonight. We are approving the state standards that are used as the basis of our curriculum. And those are posted. They are currently there on the school website for all to view.
Okay, do any board members have any questions for Paul? All right, I am seeking a motion to approve academic standards in math, English Language Arts, reading and writing, science and social studies, geography and history for use in the 2020-2021 school year. Jim Boucher is one. All right, that is a first from Jim Boucher and a second from Beth Martin. All right, all in favor?
I gotta do a roll call vote.
Oh, sorry, this is a roll call vote. Okay, Jim Boucher?
Yes.
Calo?
Yes.
Beth Martin?
Yes.
Pat McKee?
Yes.
Teresa Miles?
Yes.
Jane Rouge?
Yes.
Lance Trallo?
Yes.
Lee Webster?
Yes.
Trisha Zunker?
Yes.
Nine zero. Okay. Okay, so that motion passed with a nine zero vote. All right, thank you, Paul, for presenting that. Moving on to Agenda Item Six, Wave Expansion. Jenny Seymour, principal at Wave, will present the proposal for the wave expansion. This is an action item tonight.
I do not see Jenny Seymour on here.
Okay, I can do it.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay.
Okay, we don't see Mrs.
Oh, Chris is talking.
Oh, sorry.
Sorry, sorry. Sorry. Thank you, President Zunker and Dr. Hiltz. Jenny Seymour is not able to be here tonight, though she was very integral in pulling this presentation together. So Mr. Yudin and myself will share the information. Cassie, were you able to bring the brief presentation up?
Yep.
It was just six slides that we condensed the information to. We have been in conversations around the expansion of wave even prior to the COVID closure. So it seemed timely that we continued this conversation and there was some additional sense of urgency around moving forward with this expansion with the COVID closure. So Cassie, if you could advance. We talked about a couple of the reasons why we would expand wave. It just seems like it was the right time. We really had a solid foundation already established with our 612 charter that we could build upon by expanding and servicing our K-5 students and families. There was a desire that had been expressed during the COVID closure from WSC families to have it alternate to brick and mortar in the fall regardless of what our return or reentry program looks like, or plan looks like. And there was a desire to attract and retain and recapture students that potentially we were losing because we didn't have an option available for our K-5 families. Cassie, if you could advance. To sort of foster and continue the expansion conversations and get to a point where we could bring this information to you as an action item tonight, Dr. Hiltz pulled together a team of individuals represented by the Education Department, myself, Mrs. Sheridan, Mr. Yudin, Mr. Weber, and Mrs. Lodall at Jenny Seymour. We met weekly for roughly an hour to two hours, depending on the number of items that we had on our weekly agendas. We met with a representative from DPI to guide our charter expansion and he was able to give us very specific next steps that we would need to follow in terms of creating an addendum to our current charter contract. We also met with the Wisconsin E Network to discuss curriculum options that were available. The team also took it upon themselves, Jenny Seymour shared a list of all of the virtual charters in the state of Wisconsin. Each of the team members that I've identified here took it upon themselves to reach out independently to those schools to get feedback so that we could learn in terms of what was going well, what went well in their initial expansions. And so we could kind of learn from them before proceeding formally with this expansion that we're presenting to you tonight. John's going to talk to you a little bit about how we informed our next steps.
And so this next slide really encompasses that group's work with the Wave Governance Council. And we met with them back on May 20th and presented the proposal to them that we would like to expand wave to include the K-5 grade levels. And that group of people in that governance council were very excited by that opportunity to grow wave. Felt like the plan to bring everybody into it and the work that had been done was very positive. And so they were very supportive of making that change. And that's really the only change was to add the additional grade levels to the wave charter. So you will see there's a link on that presentation that would show you the actual addendum that was created and signed and approved by the Wave Governance Council. But overall, they saw it as a very positive step forward and one that highly endorsed an already very positive wave program. So after we went through the Wave Governance Council and we had a few more meetings, Cassie, the next slide. We thought we would just start to talk about not following this meeting, a communication plan where we begin to more publicly market and promote the K-5, K-12 wave options now available to families here. We'll do that in conjunction with the Communications Department. And then Jenny and Wave already has a very efficient enrollment process on their wave website and we'll continue to direct families there and enroll and register through wave or wave through that process. We've been getting lots of informal requests from parents just seeking some general information about wave at the K-5 end of it already. So we believe that with the communication plan, we're only going to see those numbers increase and begin to populate that K-5 version of it. Cassie, I think that's the end of that slide, just to kind of bring you up to speed on where we're at with that. So again, any of us would be happy to entertain questions you might have about wave and the K-5 addition.
Just one quick question. Did you, do you have to add staff with this plan?
We are seeking to add one teacher right now to work with our K-5 student.
Can I speak to that?
Please do.
Go ahead.
Yeah, the one wave elementary teacher was part of the budget reconciliation plan. This might be a good time to note that in our communication with current parents, there's a significant percentage that have expressed interest in virtual learning. You know, somewhere in that 15% of our population, which would be an enormous number. So we will be reaching out, assuming, you know, after we talk to the board next week about our pandemic planning and if the board moves forward with this, we would be reaching out to families to get more specific, some concrete numbers as to how many families would be interested in virtual learning. And if the numbers were really large, we may have to, you know, get additional staff, transfer them from the brick and mortar then to the virtual setting.
I do not see any other hands up.
Okay. Okay, so we're not seeing any other hands up. Board members, if there are questions, otherwise I am going to seek a motion to approve the contract addendum to add grades K through five to WSA Area Virtual Education, also known as wave. Wave would now serve grades K through 12 beginning in the fall of 2020.
Okay, Lee Webster first.
Okay, we have a first by me.
Jim.
Boucher second. And a second by Jim. This is a roll call vote. Okay, Calo?
Yes.
Beth Martin?
Yes.
Pat McKee?
Yes.
Teresa Miles?
Yes.
Jane Rouge?
Yes.
Lance Trallo?
Yes.
Lee Webster?
Yes.
Jim Boucher?
Yes.
Trisha Zunker?
Yes.
Nine to zero.
Okay, that that motion passed, nine zero. I do want to thank Jenny Seymour, Chris Nyman, Dr. Hiltz, everybody that worked on that. It's very exciting to expand wave to add those additional grade levels and it's such an opportunity, an ideal time really, quite frankly, with the concerns that you're hearing from parents and families in the district. Okay, moving on to Agenda Item Seven, Neola Policy Update. Just as a reminder, the reason that we moved to Neola and started using Neola was specifically for this, so that we could stay up to date, stay current, make sure if there were changes in law, we were always in compliance right away. So while it seems like there's a lot of changes, they're quite minimal. And I know that Dr. Hiltz is going to highlight a few. And then board members, if anybody has specific questions on specific policies that aren't addressed, we'll do those as well. But we're not going to go one by one through them. Okay, Dr. Hiltz?
All right, thank you, President Zunker. Yeah, let me just bring your attention to a few items. First, there were four new policies, if you will. One was policy number 2261.03, which we are not recommending as it just reflects state statute. If you remember when we first adopted Neola, if something was strictly a repeat of state statute and didn't add any more value, we typically did not accept that. The second policy is 2370, that one we are recommending because it describes various educational options in the district and we thought that might be of value to both staff and students, or staff and families. You will see a high school activities code on the, at the bottom of the list, top of the list, that we're moving into policy. And lastly is the work that the board already did to create the virtual board meeting policy. And so we don't have a number yet, but that's also on the list. So those are the new policies. The other 73 policies are revisions. Again, as you review the proposed changes, you really only need to look at the highlighted areas. Everything else would remain the same. And truly just four notes. First, there were some minor changes in several policies that reflect some of the emerging practices related to information, definitions of records, storage, and access to records, and coupled with privacy rights. Some of those policies would have been 2260, 7540.01, they're a number. I can certainly go through any of them, but those were relatively minor changes. Again, but just wanted you to know there was a theme with some of those policies. The second note is a couple of changes or potential changes related to students and staff and visitors. So I thought it might be of interest. First was policy 5330. And in that policy, we are proposing that we would not allow any CBD or essential oils to be used in our district. Secondly, policy 8390, we are proposing to allow, to not allow emotional support animals to be used in our district either. So those are two that I wanted to note. Policy 5630 takes a stronger position against any form of corporal punishment. Obviously, we do not engage in that, but that policy just makes a stronger statement, so I thought that was worthy of note. And lastly, you may be aware that there's a number of pending changes to Title IX related to investigations of harassment. You'll notice there's no changes in our policies. We did get some legal direction that we are referencing, but there are also some pending legal challenges. So Neola may have a special update related just to Title IX later this summer or fall, but we are aware of those, aware of those potential changes and we are monitoring those for potential future use. I will stop there and look for any questions from any board members.
I have one.
Go ahead, Trisha.
Okay, so while we wait for other board member questions, I guess I'm just wondering about this essential oils one. Is this, has this been an issue? Or, I mean, I guess I'm, if I think about a student that maybe is going to calm down from putting a little lavender on her temples, you know, what's the concern here?
I'd say the concern would be, it was specifically referencing CBD, which is considered an essential oil. And I think the, that bright red line is hard to find. So at this point, we would rather, we would prefer not to engage in that. And I know, I believe Angie Lloyd, I don't know if she's with us today, but she had done a little research in this area. Angie, are you there?
Yeah, I'm here. Can you hear me? Okay, yeah, so the nursing staff in the WSA school district has been doing research on this for a long time, since essential oils came out, you know, probably about 10 years ago. And now with CBD coming out within the last couple of years. And it has been the guidance of the health department that it stays restricted in school buildings.
Anything else?
Details in that, I mean, I could get from the nurses why they recommend that, but it's always been in our guidelines.
Just for clarity, Angie, so you're saying it's always been in the guidelines, essential oils broadly or CBD oils? Because I think that we can make that a clear line. So I'm just, I just don't know why this is, this is quite an issue. I just think they're quite different.
Hey, Trisha, I did share, several years ago, I received a number of complaints from parents whose children had allergies.
Okay.
Because actually it was, I think it was a teacher at one of the schools was using essential oils in the classroom and kids were getting headaches from it and they were having some allergic reactions. And it was just, it was kind of a nightmare for those kids that were sensitive to it.
Sure.
So I actually support this wholeheartedly. It's kind of like bad perfumes.
Yeah, no, that's just, that's the first I'm hearing of it. Now you're sharing that with me and that's why I was wondering, has this been a thing that we have to put it in policy? But, yeah, okay.
With the essential oils, it's been in there as long as I've been an administrator in the district. The CBD, this is new for CBD because that's such a new thing. That oil has been new in the last couple of years. And we've actually been asking for a policy that specifically states CBD because it gives us a clearer line that is saying yes or no to families if they want to bring that into the school.
Does this say CBD? Essential oils. What's the number again?
That is.
Can you be more specific as to which health department recommends that? The state health department. So the nurses get all of their information from the DHS. So the Department of Health Services statewide. And how old is that policy? How old is which policy? The recommendation to not have CBD in schools.
It's brand new.
That's brand. That's brand new. That's what, that's the addition. So the guidelines have been, as long as I've been an administrator in the district, which is five years, could have been longer than that, it's always been in the guidelines for at least those five years that we have not allowed essential oils into the school district. CBD is being added tonight.
Okay. All right, I have one more question.
Go ahead.
I can't even meet myself. Oh. Okay, great. Wait, is Kal talking?
No.
Okay. So, I think now Beth might be talking. It's, it's hard to notice because you have to... Beth, were I talking?
Um, I'm just waiting for my turn, not about this policy, but about a different
No, that's fine, I have a question, I want another one. So go ahead, I'll ask mine later.
I have a question on this policy.
Okay. So let's go Lance, and we'll wrap this policy up, and then Beth, when we move to a next policy, we'll move to you.
Yeah, I've got a question on two policies, but one is on the 5330. Has it generally been our practice that we don't allow students to have aspirin or ibuprofen or anything of that sort? Is that, is that, I see it looks new on the NEOLA policy, but was that our practice and policy before this?
Yes.
It was for sure the practice, yes. We've always had to have, like, a parent consent waiver if a student was going to have ibuprofen or aspirin at schools, and it was required to stay in the health room. So that is not...
Okay, so it's not new to us, it's just new to this NEOLA policy? Okay, that was the only question I had on this one.
Can you ask if there's other questions on this one? It's just easier if you do it.
Yep.
Are there any other board member questions about this policy? If so, please go ahead and speak. Okay, then go to Lance, then Beth, please.
Okay, Lance, you can go ahead with your question, and then after Lance, Beth can go.
Thank you.
So we've got the policy 5517. Listed here, not described as a new policy, but I believe that it is a new policy, because we, we looked at that policy during the original NEOLA adoption and did adopt it.
Right.
Yeah, and we had a discussion about the grooming part and some debate about that, and then ended up just not even adopting that policy at all.
Okay, ready?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, Lance, thank you for bringing that up. If we did not adopt a policy, and there weren't any significant changes that I felt needed to bring that policy back for reconsideration, I didn't bring it back.
17, are we, we're not adopting that?
Is it in the list?
5517 is listed as one of the ones we're adopting tonight, but that would be a brand new policy.
Okay, Lance, I'm sorry, I didn't know that one was in the list. Let me go back and re-review that for the next meeting.
Okay.
Beth, do you have a question?
I have a question on a different policy.
Okay, go ahead with what number.
Uh, you would... 90, I don't know, all time. Property.
That's the one I have a question about too.
What's the number?
This one.
8390.
Many of the therapists that are, that are working in various venues right now are using certified therapy animals, mainly through my dogs, but that restricts this of therapy animals. We'll see.
I can't find my new policy.
Who's the service animal?
Right.
8390.
Yep, I'm looking for the, can't pull board docs up on this right now.
I think the question is just why now the prohibition?
Right, I think...
I had the same question.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
This, I'm sorry. The, oh, I see it now, okay. I believe this is again, Angie and Larry Seiler got some feedback in this. Am I right? Angie, did you have some insights in this one?
So it would not restrict the use of therapy animals, but it would restrict somebody coming in saying that they, that they need to bring their dog in in order to feel emotionally safe at school.
That's right.
And as you can imagine, we, we need to have some sort of guidelines or limits with that kind of thing, or we're going to have 1,400 dogs at Wassa West, and 897 at Wassa East. So, no, we still, we recognize how important the therapy dogs are, our two S are always have therapy dogs, but we need to have some sort of line with that as well.
55, thank you.
In this policy, there's no mention of therapy dogs, and you think that should be added, or how do we deal with whether or not a therapy dog is coming? For example, I know a lot of teachers in other districts bring their own dog that's a certified therapy dog, and they bring it to school each day. So, anyone for policy, can we have any direction about that?
I don't believe so. We had talked about that when we initially adopted NEOLA policies. There's a lot that has to go, a lot of research and guidelines that need to go into that. And to be very frank, over COVID, we didn't have enough time to do that.
Well, I was just wondering, could we put this future, something we should discuss in the future, so we don't have that big gap?
Yeah, I would agree that therapy dogs needs to go somewhere. We also need to work with our insurance carriers, so Bob Teddick, which part of this conversation as well, to see what our insurance carriers say about that, but we definitely, I weekly get emails from staff asking if they can bring their therapy animals into the school.
So maybe if we could just put that on our list to look at in the future?
We can, if it's in the interest of the board. You know, I guess we could look at it, if that's of interest to the board. I'm not sure what policy we already have, because clearly we already have two therapy dogs that are in possession of our, of our SROs. Let us do a little research on it, see what we've already got. We can bring that back to the board in two weeks, and see if that's a direction the board's interested in pursuing.
Actually, it doesn't even have to be in two weeks, I think people have a lot of their plates right now, I just think it should, sometime in the future, during one of our meetings during the school year, when we have a chance to discuss that, or someone has a chance to research that, it might be a good idea to look at this again at some point.
I agree.
I don't see it as an emergency.
So, there is a dog at EEA, or at least there had been, you know, I had seen it there a couple times last year, and I think that's an emotional support dog, so that wouldn't qualify within service animal, but I'm not sure. But I appreciate if you can come back with that information, when it works in your, your schedule, with all the other things being balanced. Okay, are there other board member concerns? Right now, when we, when we motion on this tonight, we're going to do it with the exception of 5517, which is listed in these. Are there other policies that anybody wants to address right now, before we move on to motion? I can't really see.
No.
I'll have to stop sharing to see if there are hands up.
I can.
If there are any other questions, could you please speak now? Because I can't see hands up right now with sharing the screen. Thank you. Okay. Okay, it sounds like there aren't any further questions. So with that, I am seeking a motion to recommend to the full Board of Education the approval of the attached policies as presented, except policy 5517. Seeking a first and a second. Okay, Lance is first. Okay, so Lance Trollop is the first on that motion.
And Beth Martin is second.
Beth Martin is second, and this will be a roll call vote. Beth Martin?
Yes.
Pat McKee?
Yes.
Teresa Miles?
Yes.
Jane Rouge?
Stay.
Lance Trollop?
Yes.
Lee Webster?
Yes.
Jim Bushey?
Yes.
Kallo?
No.
Tricia Zunker?
Yes.
Okay, so that motion passes, seven yes, one abstention, one no vote. Thank you. All right, moving on with our agenda, we are on agenda item nine, we are moving past agenda item eight, because we did address that early in the meeting. Agenda item nine is the update on a July startup of extracurricular activities, it's an action item, and I'm turning this back over to Paul Weber again.
Hi, thank you, everybody. Yeah, starting July 1st, the restrictions are being lifted, and so we can begin starting up some of our athletics again. And so I know that Mr. Harvey and Mr. Miller are on the call tonight as well, and they have a little statement that they're putting out, and we think it's important that we get board support, board approval on this before it goes out to everybody. And it's basically a statement that we're going to follow WIAA directives, and also guidelines provided by the national associations, and the state and local government agencies as well. And so in other words, we're going to continue to, you know, look at social distancing, we're going to look at, to continue to ensure the health and safety of our, of our student athletes by making sure we're disinfecting, using proper disinfecting techniques, and educating the athletes to make sure that they, they don't come to the school if they're not feeling well, and those types of things. And so if you have any questions, feel free to answer them, and like I said, I know Brian and Greg are on tonight, so they can hop in and maybe answer some of these a little better than I can.
I asked Kathy, could you pull that statement out and share it, because I know it's hard, because then you can't see hands raised. Can I find it first? I did have a question, I just want to make sure that it's on the screen. Okay, so the exact statement that's going to go out says, "As restrictions lift in regards to the assembly of students on July 1st, 2020, the Wassa School District will permit spring and summer sport contacts and school-sponsored club and organizations meetings. This will include not only directives from the WIAA, but also those guidelines provided by national associations and state and local government agencies. Appropriate distancing and health precautions in response to COVID-19 will be followed as outlined by these agencies." My question for Paul, for Dr. Hiltz, was there any contemplation of including a statement of, you know, the district isn't liable, just a non-liability? Did you contact legal counsel on that?
Tricia, I have not personally contacted them. From what I'm understanding from some of the meetings that I've been sitting in, is that we could run, we could get waivers, but as long as we're following the guidelines that are put out by the state and local health agencies and our governing organizations, that we should be exempt from being liable if somebody would contract it.
Thanks, Paul. I guess from my end, I like to see a little more aggressive on that, but that's just my experience. Other questions or concerns for Paul or Dr. Hiltz? Looks like...
Lance has his hand up.
Okay, Lance?
Sorry, that was left from before, but I'll just try and, since I have a hand up, I guess. So on the statement, I think Paul's right, I'm not the district's lawyer, so I'll hire somebody else to give the official opinion, but in general, there are, there's pretty broad immunity to municipalities, including school districts, and where that immunity fails usually is when the municipality doesn't follow their guidelines. So when you have a rule in place and the district doesn't follow it, is where the immunity would, would apply typically, it's very general, but the summary of it was pretty accurate.
Yep.
Okay. Other people?
Jane has her hand raised.
Okay.
I would like to see the CDC mentioned in that statement, and I don't understand how social distancing is going to work during sports, because when you're exerting yourself, that six-foot distance grows, and that six-foot distance is based on mask-wearing. So how is this going to work when the kids are exerting themselves?
Jane, I'm going to turn that one over to Brian and Greg, they may have a little more information than I do on that.
Well, Jane, thanks for the question. As of Thursday, we received guidelines and guidance from the WIAA for the first time in this entire process, and within that guidance, they list various stratifications of risk level, from high, high-risk level to moderate, to low, to lowest. Within each of those, then, are prescribed practices and activities which would be, quote unquote, "allowable," let's put, use that term, I guess. Our, obviously, our commitment then is to listen to our local health agencies regarding what stratification we fall into, and then act accordingly. And currently, changes every Wednesday, I guess, but currently we're at a moderate risk level, so within the framework of the guidelines that we've been provided, we would only perform those particular forms of activity, and within moderate, in a lot of cases, masking is recommended. So if it's indicated as, you know, by the health agency as a best practice in the hundred one which we ought to practice, then we will. But recognizing your question even further, even within the current restrictions, for example, moderate risk level, you can gather with 50 people outside, but even those 50 people need to be arranged in pods, so as to promote more social distancing. So every effort is being made to try to provide as much social distancing as possible, but also provide opportunity. So it's a fair question, but I would say that based on the guidelines that we receive, we should be able to get to that, to that level of distancing. Also, what should be noted is that all of our coaches or advisors who are planning any sort of activity during the month of July are required to attend a training session with Larry Seiler, I believe Kathleen Becker is going to be there, so is Julie Welch, and they'll be going through a lot of the expectations that we would have relative to trying to protect our student athletes, our coaches, and their parents, their brothers and sisters, to best practice.
That's great. My other concern is, and it's not just us saying, it's...
My other concern is, and it's not just us saying it, I hear it on the news about staying home when you don't feel well. Well, that's really good, but we also know that you can feel just fine and be a transmitter. So I think we need to make that clear. We can only do what we do, we just can't tell everyone to stay home, and that looks like what's going to happen this fall. But people still need to practice safe because you don't know. And as I was having my COVID test yesterday in the emergency room, she was telling me when I came in through the test that their numbers have been down. So that's really promising.
And Jane, maybe additionally, they'll put that on even more. Obviously, we have concerns, and we're going to act in utmost caution and care. But part of our guidance also provides us a coach-athlete symptom checklist, which we have to follow. So when somebody shows up for an activity, each one of those people are recorded in terms of who is there, did they show up with a fever or cough, you know, shortness of breath, all the symptoms that we are grown accustomed to, we have to record that. Obviously, if somebody is sick, we're instructed to isolate and get them sent home again. So those sorts of things are built into the structure of the guidelines. So we will be sure to be practicing all the proper guidelines and practices.
Great, thank you.
Hey, Todd here. Uh, what does WIAA stand for?
I'm sorry, I should have mentioned that, Todd, that's our governing body, the Wisconsin Interscholastic Athletic Association. They govern all, but not all, but most of our high school sports. And as a result, they provide the guidance, the spark of rules and regulations for that sport. And we've been, we as athletic representatives, we need for guidance specific to the COVID-19 outbreak, and they have finally provided that for us. So they are, in short, they are our governing body, and we have to abide by their policies and rules. And we are a member school of the WIAA.
Okay, thank you. So they're not a health agency or anything like that. They just, you know, give you guidance on interscholastic sports and how to, I guess, navigate those?
Sure, that's a fair question. But I would also refer you, and I think it might be our best interest to provide you the document that you received. Because at the very top of the document, they have an introduction to it, and they've been working directly with the governor's office, the Department of Health Services, and everybody that's involved in all of this decision-making, DPI. They've been all working together in collaboration, trying to put together the guidance that we have been seeking. And now, not so coincidentally, guidance for schools just came out today, ours returning to schools. So I think this is all kind of coming together at the same time because they've all been working together, putting together a plan, and now it's time to release it. So, yeah, they're not making this decision independently.
Okay. I don't like this statement at all because, you know, it's saying only directives from the WIAA, national associations, and state and local government agencies, but it's not specific to health departments. I don't want, I would really like to see that, you know, we are going to follow health department recommendations. I really feel like our state and local governments have failed us during this pandemic. So I don't support this statement as it stands right now.
So, question, Paul. When you reference national associations in that statement, are you referring to the Center for Disease Control? What are the national associations that are encompassed in that?
I don't want to speak for Brian and Greg, but I'm assuming that they're referencing the National Association that would be the equivalent to the WIAA, but on the national level. And so we could be more specific if that's what the board would like. We could rewrite this and include specific agencies, including the CDC and local health departments, if you feel that would be more clear.
So to be clear, this would, this as written could include CDC? There isn't anything that is inaccurate?
Right, it's not inaccurate to say that it doesn't. I don't know what the guys' intent were when they wrote that they were including the CDC or if they were just including the national organization that governs high school athletics.
And Paul, I can add that the intent is to cover all the agencies that you're all asking about. So in the interest of trying to be more concise, we wrote it such that, you know, because the National March Band Association could have guidelines that they would recommend, or the National DAP organization could have guidelines that they would recommend. And our intent was to try to wrap it around all of those particular organizations that might have specific guidance for our specific programs without having to identify each and every one of them specifically by name. Now, adding health department and CDC, we felt as though they were part of our local government and such, as the fact that we have to listen to our local health department in making decisions upon our risk level, we felt like that was appropriate anyway, which is our issue.
But Paul and Greg, I actually like the way you guys have this thing worded right now because essentially what you're saying is you're going to use the latest, greatest, best information from whatever agency is putting out there that you think is most relative to our activities. I mean, it's an exercise in futility to go through and try to name one hundred and seventy-four different agencies that may have some good information regardless of whether they're affiliated with state, local, or federal government.
I don't think that it's about listing every possible agency, but it's the fact that we are in a global pandemic, a health pandemic, and it's not clarified in here that the guidelines include health agencies. So I'm wondering if we can make a friendly amendment, if, and if this would be accurate to say... So we go to that second sentence. This will include not only directives from the WIAA, but also include guidelines, but also those guidelines provided by national associations, including the CDC, and state and local government agencies, including health departments. Is that something that we can say? Is that, would that make this statement still appropriate? And then people are comfortable with it, but we're not listing every, everything, or identifying the health aspect here?
But isn't the health department a local agency, a local government agency?
Yeah, I know, but...
I'm not... So when you say national association and state, local government agencies, that can mean anything. It can mean from, you know, national association on shoes to state and local government agencies, there's a lot of state and local government agencies. What I'd really like to see them say is just health departments. You know, I mean, aren't they going to take those guidelines from the CDC? So why can't we just say the health departments, federal and state and local?
But this is Lance, I think, I think we can say something like local health departments, but I think in answer to your question about why we can't just say that is because many of these activities do have other agencies that they have to follow. So, you know, a WIAA sport does have to follow the guidelines from the WIAA. Doesn't mean we can't be more restrictive if the local marathon, you know, county health department or the state health department is more restrictive than that, but... And I don't know, I'm, you know, I'm kind of, in the sense that if we start naming things, you know, what do we do if we say the CDC and the Marathon County Health Department? What do we do if there's a conflict there? And we said we're going to follow.
And if we're worried about, you know, the National Shoe Association putting out a guideline, you have to ask yourself, do you really think that that's something we follow?
Okay, so I think that this is becoming unnecessarily complicated. And I'm hearing, I'm hearing good points on all sides, but I'm going to move to motion on this. And I'm going to seek a motion to approve the extracurricular updates as presented.
I can't see anybody. There you go. Sarah first. There you go.
Lee Webster's at first.
Okay, we have a first from Lee Webster.
Second.
Did we have a second?
Here, I'll do two.
Okay.
Teresa, oh, and we have Teresa Miles as a second. Okay, Pat McKee?
Yes.
Teresa Miles?
Yes.
Jane Roche?
No.
Lance Trollop?
Was that a yes?
I didn't hear, Lance? Oh, thank you.
Yes.
Lee Webster?
Yes.
Jim Boucher?
Yes.
Calo?
No.
Beth Martin?
Yes.
Tricia Zonker?
Yes.
Okay, so that motion passes seven yes votes, two no votes. All right, thank you very much for taking us through that. All right, before we move to the last agenda item, I do just want to remind board members that we do have a special meeting next Monday. And with that, we're moving on to Agenda Item Ten. I am seeking a motion to adjourn.
Teresa got it.
All right, we have a first from Teresa Miles.
Nobody wants to leave.
Does nobody want to leave? Can stay here.
I'm sure you're muted.
Oh, okay, sorry. Okay, I guess that's why they hear us in here. I was seeking a motion to adjourn. Did, um, did everybody hear my reminder that we have a special meeting next week? That was my other thing, is just reminding everybody about our special meeting. And so with that, seeking a motion to adjourn, we did have Teresa as a first, but not everybody heard that, so I'm seeing... Okay, so Beth is a second. Thank you very much for that. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Motion carries nine zero, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Good night.